Under is our official timekeeper, so just keep an eye on him during your presentation. So appeals to the decision from the Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provisions of 2.68.030, the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You're advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First, on last month's meeting minutes, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Okay, last month's meeting minutes are accepted. So the first thing is consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be heard, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
There are three items on consent agenda today. 2223 Belmont Boulevard, an application to construct an outbuilding that requires setback determination. 3715 Princeton Avenue, application to construct an addition. And 119 Bowling Avenue, and that's an application to construct a rear addition as well. Staff has reviewed these applications, find they meet their respective design guidelines and recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions, Sean, about any of the things on the consent agenda? Any questions, Sean, about any of the things on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, seeing none. Open public hearing, does anyone speak regarding any of these on the consent agenda that we Open public hearing, does anyone speak regarding any of these on the consent agenda that we need to take off? need to take off? Okay, seeing none. Okay, seeing none. Closed public hearing. Closed public hearing. Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second? Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
All. All.
All opposed? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. So the first case is case that's coming off the consent agenda, which I need an agenda, So the first case is case that's coming off the consent agenda, which I need an agenda, actually. actually. Just realized I don't have one. Just realized I don't have one. Maybe I'll share yours. Maybe I'll share yours. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I didn't realize it until I start talking. I didn't realize it until I start talking.
First item was deferred from last month at 710 McFerrin Avenue. First item was deferred from last month at 710 McFerrin Avenue. The request is to demolish a 1914 historic building here. Since the building is historic, demolition obviously doesn't meet the design guidelines, so the next step is to review economic hardship, which is essentially looking at it to see The request is to demolish a 1914 historic building here. if it's truly just beyond repair. Since the building is historic, demolition obviously doesn't meet the design guidelines, There's, of course, a deeper analysis and additional photographs in your staff recommendation, so the next step is to review economic hardship, which is essentially looking at it to see but in short, when comparing the expenses, the purchase price and the rehab estimate, if it's truly just beyond repair. just bring it up to code, with the potential post-rehab value based on recent comps in There's, of course, a deeper analysis and additional photographs in your staff recommendation, but in short, when comparing the expenses, the purchase price and the rehab estimate, the overlay and of a similar size and age, staff found that the applicant could make just bring it up to code, with the potential post-rehab value based on recent comps in about a $15,000 profit. So therefore, staff recommends disapproval, finding that the applicant has not proven the overlay and of a similar size and age, staff found that the applicant could make economic hardship and demolition does not meet Section 3B2 for appropriate demolition about a $15,000 profit. and does not meet design guidelines for 3B1 for inappropriate demolition. Any questions for me before turning it over to the applicant?
I don't think so. Okay, thanks, Robyn. Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project?
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. I have brought copies of, although the report that you have before you was delivered on April 8th, I received a first version of the report that was delivered on April 6th. There are key changes on five of those pages, and so I brought a printout of that that I'd like you all to review. Okay, if you could pass them out.
First, since, is this something staff has already reviewed?
Yes, this is just a copy of the staff review.
This is a draft of a previous staff recommendation. It is not something that you have received or reviewed in advance.
It is something, though, that you have reviewed, though?
We wrote it, but it was just a draft.
Okay, okay.
It's really not relevant to, in my opinion, this is your decision because it's new information for you.
Okay. Okay, well, if it hasn't been reviewed, I mean, vetted by the staff unless it was part of what their recommendation was, and I think my understanding is it's not something that's in your final that you had been able to vet. We typically don't like to look at something they haven't reviewed yet and vetted because then we're up here trying to do math, you know, trying to figure it out, so that's a...
I can understand that concern. I actually tried to contact a member of the commission prior to this meeting to ask, it was Hunter G. that I contacted, to ask what I should do in this situation, because what happened was on April 6th, I received a first draft of the report, and on that draft, there were three low comps and two high comps. I was able to accurately point out that both of the high comps were based on inaccurate square footage. The first set of comps had price per square foot at $370 a square foot on one comp and $300 a square foot on the other. The reason for these inflated values is because while the original home had been about 1,000 square feet, significant additions had been added, and that hadn't been taken into consideration. When I brought this to Mr. Walker and Ms. Ziegler's attention, they provided completely new comps, throwing out the three low comps in addition to the two high comps. In addition to that, on April 6th, the commission said that the value of the home would be $236,000 and that they needed more information in order to make a decision. Two days later, on April 8th, the commission said that the home would be worth $252,000 and that my permit was denied. It's really hard for me to understand how the value changed by so much in just 48 hours. Beyond that, I have more documentation here, and this is my first time. I was completely caught off guard by what happened. I have, I've also brought printouts of my email correspondence with Mr. Walker where I asked him directly, what happened? Why did these low comps that seem relevant get thrown out? And why do we have all new comps at a much higher square footage than the existing home is? I'm very concerned about this. This is my first time dealing with the board. When I spoke with other builders who have dealt with the staff before, the message that I got from nearly everyone was, don't mess with them. They're like the mafia. If you go against them, they will crush you. Like, literally, this is what, this is the report from many people, and I think that the changes between the April 6th and the April 8th report are very much in keeping with the reputation that the staff has. I realize that this is my first time being here. I realize that, that, you know, there may be an explanation that I don't understand, but my hope is that, based on the evidence I have with me here today, that what I have to say will be taken very seriously.
I can help with some of that if you'd like.
Sure.
The information in the draft were comps that were, included comps that were not in the overlay, and those properties don't have as high values as properties that are in the overlay. Obviously, this is in the overlay, so we revised the information based on that, so all the comps are within the overlay. This was on the agenda for last month, and the applicant asked for it to be deferred. The assumption was to provide more information, but we did not receive anything. After the deadline, I did ask him if he had any additional information he wanted to provide to you, and he said no.
I can also show from my email correspondence that the reason for the deferral was because I was out of town. My, all of my information had actually been in in time for the February meeting, but because of Mr. Walker's vacation, I was not able to make it onto the February agenda, and then I was out of town for, I'm sorry, I was unable to make it for the March agenda, and then I was out of town for the April. I did not say that I was providing any additional information, but only that I needed deferral because I was out of town. And because it had gone from needing more information to project denied, I wanted to be able to represent myself here, you know.
I definitely think, I definitely appreciate you wanting to represent yourself because sometimes people just send stuff and, you know, then we're having to ask staff for questions. The, and I, you know, now in public, you've brought everybody to attention to it, and I do believe that the information you've provided will be, will be vetted by staff a lot, you know, not necessarily a lot better, but just as they really would. The only thing we have to be careful of, and I hope you understand it, is that we are, at this point, we just need to be able to just review the information in front of us, and it just gets problematic if we're like pulling out calculators and trying to figure out, you know what I mean? So, and that's what we count on staff to do, but I...
Here's part of my dilemma. When, if I hadn't contested the first draft, the April 6th draft, I could have come in here and said, look, those two high comps are completely inaccurate. No house has ever sold in East Nashville for $370 a square foot, and I think that the commission should be very concerned that the people that are supposed to be making expert analysis about value would put a comp at $370 a square foot when no house in East Nashville, regardless of how fantastic a house it is, has ever sold for that price. Why is that not a red flag? If we want to deal with just the information that's before us today, I can also show you that in my email correspondence with Mr. Walker, I told him that I knew for a fact that 1010 Maxwell was not 1,116 square feet, and I told him that if you were to look, to do a simple Zillow search, which he had used to discredit a couple of the lower comps, it would clearly show that it was not 1,116 square feet, but was instead 1,558 square feet. That's also consistent with the Zillow listing. The other high comp, and these are the only two comps that would support a high enough square footage to make economic hardship illegitimate. That other comp is 937 Mansfield. It's listed here as 1,520 square feet, and truthfully, up until this morning, I accepted that, after I initially contested the 1,000 square footage calculation, that this 1,520 square feet will be an accurate number. But just this morning, as I was doing all the reviewing, I realized that I probably shouldn't have just taken that number for granted, and I contacted the current owner of the house. I can show you both that her cellphone number is publicly available on, you know, on the internet, and also the text message that she sent me that confirmed that the actual square footage of the house was 1,873 square feet, and it was a three-bedroom, three-bathroom. Those are the only two comps out of these five that support what the commission staff has said.
And $370 a square foot does sound kind of high.
The other one was $299 a square foot, also a comparable square footage price that nothing in East Nashville sold for.
Since it's your first time, have we, has he seen like an example, too, of like a full case of how that, you know, of how people put together? I mean, because that's another good, maybe, piece of information that'll make it even easier for your case, you know, like some, an example, maybe, of a hardship that was...
They're all so really different, but I think, did I send you one? I know someone requested one, I can't remember.
Requested.
A staff recommendation from another project?
Just an example of how, of putting together that hardship.
I can show you all my email correspondence I've never received.
Okay, I think that would be something good to get, too, because in that way, it'll be a, because you, I mean, just by listening, you think you have some valid points, and I think once you put that together, and I'm talking a lot, if any of the commissioners want to chime in, I don't mean...
The average sale price in the staff recommendation is $224 a square foot from the comps within the area.
Right, listen, and that's based on an average of five comps, which includes a $295, $295.70 comp, it's not actually quite $300 a square foot. Everything else falls below, other than this $295, look at these numbers. The other four comps are 195, 196, 212, and 223. So that means that four out of the five homes that are listed as comparable have a lower price per square foot than what's being projected for this one. And this is even though we're dealing with three-bedroom, two-bathroom homes, they threw out the comps that were the same size and instead brought in new comps that were three-bedroom, two-bathroom homes that were much larger. And so I understand that I'm supposed to give the staff an opportunity to review all this information, but first of all, when I submitted the information to them, it wasn't reflected in the report that they gave. I said that I knew for a fact that 1010 Maxwell was not 1,116 square feet, and when I provided them information showing that the comps were inaccurate on April 6th, what they did was completely throw them all out and make a new case on April 8th. 235,000 to 252,000. We need more information to permit denied. I mean, I'd like to ask the commission if that seems concerning, if on the face that, you know, that seems like an issue.
The confusion, definitely, does. I think, I think just by, based on everything you're, I really do, I mean, it seems like you have really gotten some more information together. It just seems like, I mean, and I just want to make sure that we can judge on it properly. And like I said, whenever we have, these are our hardest cases, just so you know, since it was your first time, and I've sat through a lot of hardships where we've had to go through it and vet through it, even with everything lined out, and I'd hate to give you a disservice by, you know, us up here trying to fool with, you know, what does that mean? What email, you know, I mean, you don't want that. That wouldn't be fair to you or to us trying to do the best.
Now, might I provide you with this information for your review at a later date? Can you take this home, or does everything need to be filtered through the staff?
Well, yeah, everything has to be filtered through the staff. And, I mean, and like I said, you've put on record that you have concerns. They'll vet through it, I promise.
But this is the problem, is they vet themselves. When I ask, you know, I believe that what I dealt mainly with Mr. Walker, not mainly with Ms. Ziegler, this has been ongoing since September, and he kept putting me off and putting me off and giving me bad information, and I wish that I had started the email chain a lot earlier, to tell you the truth. But now we're over six months, and when I asked Mr. G. how I filed a complaint against Mr. Walker or against a member of the staff, he didn't know. And I'd just like to ask the commission, if I feel that Mr. Walker is extremely partial in his evaluation of these claims, how do I go about filing a complaint against Mr. Walker? And what assurance can I get from the commission that I will not receive retribution from Mr. Walker? Because I feel I've already received retribution from Mr. Walker between, the difference between the April 6th and April 8th reports.
Well, I'm going to let our counsel answer that, but I will tell you this, well, we're pretty, we won't do any retribution here because we, yeah, we won't, number one. So once you, once we see the evidence, we will look at it. And then, I think, Robyn, you said you haven't had Dylan Hur, I mean, she will take the lead on this, and if you feel more comfortable, too, I mean...
It was Robyn that authored the report that changed the value from 235 to 252 in 48 hours. So to suggest that Robyn is the person that should vet these concerns, I...
Well, I mean, vet your evidence, just vet your evidence, and she'll, you'll sit down with her and go through it all. Maybe, Susan, do you want to chime in just on a little bit on the other part, or...
That's really tricky for us because we represent the metropolitan government, and what he's essentially asking could be viewed as how do we, how do we file what could be a complaint that could go elsewhere? And I don't want to get into giving him legal advice, so I'm trying to walk that tightrope. There are certain sections of the code that he could consult. I don't have those with me today because we work out of Title 17, but I'll be happy to maybe speak with him after the meeting is over or something like that, if there's something, some information with regard to what the procedures are in the code. I think it's under Title 2. But again, this is kind of an unusual request, I don't have that title with me, and I can provide him with just that title, and it'll be incumbent upon him to get with his own legal counsel as to what he would need to do from there.
Does the commission have the authority to initiate a review of the way that these sort of cases have been handled by Mr. Walker saying the last six months?
To the extent that the board has oversight of the staff, then certainly the board could review anything related to staff relations and whatnot. We would have to consult with, with Metro HR as to any particulars about what we would need to do in terms of that process and what that process would look like, particularly if it's outside of any evaluation that the board typically would do. And most directors are evaluated at some point throughout their tenure by the board or have a system that is set up. I don't know that to be the case for this particular board, and we would have to consult with HR to see kind of how that process, what that process looks like.
It seems to me like it would be within the scope of the investigation on this property to figure out what happened here. You know, why is the April 6th report so much different from the April 8th report? And my concern is that when all the information gets filtered through staff, say I bring them this, all this information, okay, well, now we've got a third set of comps. You know, we throw out the first set, we throw out, now here's another one. You know, finally, we've got something that supports our case, and it seems like whack-a-mole. As soon as legitimate objection pops up, they knock it down, and then there's another one, you know, and at some point...
There are two issues here, if I may. There are two issues here. One is an issue dealing with it from kind of a personnel standpoint. The other is the substantive issue, the underlying issue that the board is now considering and debating as to whether or not it's going to take action today on. And I think it's important that the board look at it from that, those two different standpoints, because they're very different. Certainly, anything that has, that has happened in communication, any correspondence, anything that has happened with regard to the substance of the application here can be shared with the board through this procedure, if you do it today or if you do it another day. Of course, we have a rule that says that no new information will be submitted to the board at the day of the public hearing. So assuming that you follow the rule that has been adopted with regard to that, whenever you do take this matter up, any of that information is part of, I guess, the applicant's case, and he can share that information with you at that time. You can take it into consideration how you think appropriate in deliberating and deciding coming of your decision.
Do you understand that part, too?
I do, I do.
Because it's like, even if, which we all will tell you happens a lot, that they will have a disapproval, and this information, the applicant will come with their information, and we will say, well, no, we agree, or at least parts of it, we agree with the applicant. So, yes, and so if you, if we're looking at that information that has been prior to, we don't have to go, this commission rules on it case by case. We just look at the information that's been vetted by them. So, in light of what Susan said, yes, once we get, I use my hand to talk too much, but once we get that in front of us, even if it is contradictory and you want to bring that up during your presentation, we will vet that. I mean, and, you know, we all are, have listened to a lot of cases, and we would say, you know, we would either agree or understand your point, or we'd say, well, this is what we're seeing. So, so I think, I mean, since it is new information, but it sounds pertinent information, I would, you know, I think I can recommend that you, you put it all together and get it back to us, and I, surely, the way you put it together, I think it'd be worthwhile and be very much worth, you know, reviewing more at this meeting.
And to the extent that, if I may, to the extent that it gives the applicant and the board any comfort, the role of the staff as they vet that information that's submitted by the applicant is, and I'm hearing him, I'm thinking, I'm hearing him thinking that they're going to take it apart and whatnot and maybe not get all the information, but all of the information will be given to the board. It's just that the staff has the opportunity to review it and make any recommendations that would address some of the issues that may be brought out by the applicant, not to prevent you from having that information.
And just also, I will state publicly here, too, that they get you a good example, and again, if necessary, so you can see it, and it'll be different, it may, you know, and it'll, we will, that, we like that, too, because it normally has pictures and, like this did, but it'll show the numbers and it'll be a lot easier for us to go through.
And to clarify my concern, my concern is less that information won't make it to your desk and more concerned about how radically the opinion of the staff was modified by the information I gave. Like, if this is understood to be almost a judicial proceeding, it's as if the defense has to submit their entire opening-closing argument and evidence to the prosecution. Let the prosecution do their absolute best that they can with that to make an even stronger case. And, you know, it's hard for me to interpret the April 6th to April 8th changes really any other way.
Just to, if, I'm sorry, did I, did we...
Yeah, or if you don't mind, let me finish, just briefly. If we're to take into consideration the actual size of 1010 Maxwell and 937 Mansfield, the average price per square foot would fall low enough that it would meet, that the sales price would be lower than the construction cost. So without doing any further modification to the comps, it would fall below, it would fall into that hardship category. And so I just wanted to make that note so that when we come back next month, if now we have even more new comps, you know, a whole nother set of comps...
I understand, yeah, yeah. Well, it sounds like if it's clear, it'll be easy. I'm sorry, did you want to...
I was just going to clarify the process a little bit. Staff are not decision makers, so the whole retribution issue isn't here because we're not the decision makers, you are. Our staff recommendation is just that. It is our analysis of the information that we've been given. If there is a decision to defer today, may I recommend that you request an engineer report? Those are usually very helpful. We don't always give applicants drafts of the staff recommendations. Obviously, all the recommendations go through many, many changes in drafts, and so we did that as a way to help him provide more information. And he chose not to this time, but maybe now he could, and again, I would recommend that a engineer report be a part of that. I think that would make your decision-making process much easier.
Which, again, which is adding additional costs, you know, to me, you know, I'm not saying that I'm not, I'm willing to do that. There's a couple other things just in this report that I think show partiality, and I've got to say that I could, if, if you were to compare, I could give you, I would have to ask permission, but if they felt convinced that they would be treated anonymously, I can easily give you the names of five builders that have dealt with the staff before that gave me the advice that retribution was a very real part of the staff report.
Well, that part, like I said, it would probably be...
Yeah, I know you're not able to...
Yeah, there's no we can do it. But I would just say, I would still think now that with this new information, and if you feel like you're willing to go, you know, I don't want to say financial, whatever you buy as an engineer report, but the more, I will just say, though, the more information you have for us, the better. And any, like, and, you know, if a professional says this and it's written, they've signed...
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it.
But you know what I mean, it's just, it'll be up to you, that's...
If we could look at page four, it says in this bottom paragraph that staff's review found that 90% of the interior is likely repairable, but the estimate shows 100% replacement of walls, interior trim, windows, 30% replacement of flooring, 50% replacement of doors. Staff did not find evidence of termites or serious decay on the inside of the building, but did not view underneath the building. The entire basis of my hardship claim is that this house was built without a permanent foundation and that the cost of putting a foundation under a house that was built without fears, I'm sorry, that was built without sufficient footings and that was built without a continuous foundation, that the foundation is the sole basis for this hardship deferral. So it seems very convenient that when the staff went through the house, they said that they didn't go in the basement, that they didn't evaluate the one thing that was the entirety of my...
Sir, excuse me, excuse me. Did, I'm assuming you were currently on this property, and you're renting it to the, to the last owner?
I'm renting it to the last owner.
Well, you said earlier that you had asked the current resident how many square foot it was.
No, no, I'm sorry, to clarify, that was 937 Mansfield, which is listed as a comparable. I asked the owner of that home, not the owner of my home.
Well, did you go underneath the house when you bought the property?
Yeah, I did.
So, I'm wondering what your surprise is, because the staff certainly was not there on the day you closed on the property.
Um, I'm, uh, I'm...
No, it's just, it's just an honest, simple question. I mean, you bought the home, you knew what you were buying.
Right.
You went under, you knew the condition of the foundation or the lack of a foundation. You chose to move forward.
When I spoke to Mr. Walker, he told me that I would need to buy the home before my application could be considered, but that if the cost of repairing the home was greater than what I would be able to sell it for, that hardship deferral would be granted.
And have we proven that?
Well, he's, and that's what he's saying. I believe, you, like I was saying, I think you have a good case, do you, once it's put together and, you know, we get this new information, I mean, and if there's more necessary investigation underneath the, you know, just, you've got photographs of it, and if you, if you're, you know, if there's a professional that can go look at with you, and he agrees with you, you could write, you know, he'll have something written. It'll just make it, this, all that we've done now, we could, if we have all that in front of us, it'll just make it go easier. And regardless, like, like Robyn pointed out, it's just the recommendation, which they may even change once you present this new information, and, but even if they don't, if we get it in front of us and we feel like you've made the right strong case, then we'll, regardless, we will judge accordingly. But I will admit, the deferral is up to you to make, I mean, but otherwise, we'd have to go on last month's, well, no, you deferred last month, so, you know, it's up to you if you want to make the deferral, but I, I would basically recommend that you, well, I mean, I can't make the recommendation, but it seems like it'll be in good shape if you put together all this, get this, the new stuff, submit it, regardless of what their recommendation is, and let us vet that, and I think you'll, you know, we'll be able to make a more, you know, definite decision.
Okay.
Okay?
Without being a dead horse, I have just two more things I'd like to say.
Okay, we're, we're getting tight on time, but if you want to, if you, how about one of those two points?
Okay. Staff's review found that 95, or 90% of the interior is likely repairable, but all these comparable homes had to be gutted to the studs so that new electrical, new plumbing, and insulation could be run. Uh, so it seems that the staff is holding me to a double standard where on the one hand, uh, I'm being held to the highest comparable sales in the entire area, but on the other hand, uh, making the improvements that it would take in order to hit those high comps, uh, is not being taken into consideration.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much and, um, we'll see you next month.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm the front.
Okay, so, uh, 1412 Sharp Avenue?
1412 Sharp is an application for construction of a single-family residence and detached outbuilding on this now vacant lot. Uh, the commission approved a different design for this site in June of last year with practically identical height, scale and, and features. In the interest of time, I'm going to forego the entire presentation, but I'm happy to, um, answer the commission's questions.
So, what are we looking at now?
This is the, the perspective of the current proposal for, uh, for the lot.
And your recommendation?
Yes, we recommend approval. Uh, the conditions are, uh, minimal, that staff verify the finished floor height, utility location, windows, doors and roofing.
There's, um, instead of wood railing, have they called out a wood railing or a steel railing across the front? It's a heck of a long way to go.
It's a wood railing.
It's a heck of a long way to go between two columns and just, you may get a little bit different appearance on the front, just the reality of finding a straight 16-foot two-by-four, whatever cap rail it might want.
Sure, the applicant is also here and she can.
See what applicant, you know, see what, what might happen in between those two, um, that, that would secure it to the, to the top of the porch. I, I don't have a recommendation other than it probably won't look like what's shown here.
Um, any other questions? So, you're, you recommend approval based on the recent, okay. Um, any other questions for staff? Okay. We'll, um, let the applicant come forward and speak regarding it.
How do you want to say?
Just say your name and address.
Heidi Newman.
Okay.
Uh, what else do you need?
Any questions for the applicant, um, besides the?
Ma'am, are you, are you satisfied with the staff recommendations and working with the staff?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm not, I'm not looking at the application. Um, it shows a, I don't know, six or seven blocks. Um, is there, is there a grade change across the site, front to back or side to side?
It's a slight, uh, change if you look at the front elevation to the, from the right to the left. It kind of dips up in the back. Can you see that, that, um, left elevation? Do you have those plans? Do they not have this? Okay. It's very close.
Yeah, let's skip. Okay, the, the perspective and then the, the elevations are, are a little, a little different. I think the perspective puts it up in the air quite a bit.
Oh, I think he left, I think he left, um, in the perspectives, I think he left out the.
Very good, looks like they've addressed that. So noted. That was the only question I had.
Okay, thanks. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak, uh, regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing? Discussion? Or motion?
Quick question, staff. The, um, narrow vertical windows on this, this elevation that we're looking at now, or I don't really remember seeing those, are you okay just because they're on the side, is that?
I, I think so. I mean, those are, do have a, the appropriate proportion. I think traditionally it's the, when they're flipped the other way, more of a horizontal window that we've, are understanding from you is that we want to be a little more careful with those.
Any others?
Move approval with staff recommendation?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 215 Scott Avenue?
215 Scott Avenue is another application for construction of a single-family residence on this vacant lot. Um, also harkening to the past, the commission approved the exact same design, uh, that is presented now for 215 Scott, uh, at 1412 Sharp Avenue, uh, last year. Um, so this is a design that you have, um, have previously approved, uh, last summer just on a different site about a half mile away. Um, the only conditions on this one is recommending the, uh, street setback be moved a foot, um, farther, uh, away from the street, uh, in order to split the difference of the adjacent homes. Um, and a walkway was not on the site plan and staff has recommended that that be added as well to meet the design guidelines. Um, it meets the rest of the relevant design guidelines with the conditions that staff verify the finished floor height, uh, and approved windows, doors and roofing. Uh, we recommend approval of the application for 215 Scott Avenue.
The reason for the, um, the adjustment, the setback is to make the buildings' facades or porches align?
Uh, in this case, when they're just a little bit askew, um, we ask to split the difference between them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions to staff? Okay, thanks, Paul. Uh, would the applicant like to come forward and, um, speak regarding their case? Is applicant here? No, okay. Um, open public hearing? Anyone like to speak regarding this case? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion? Or motion?
So we assume then, just to go back to Paul, that the applicant is in agreement with all the staff recommendations?
That's correct.
Thank you. I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sam's second if anybody missed that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 198 Manchester Avenue?
Hello again, this is an app, another application for construction of a single-family residence and detached outbuilding on the site of this non-contributing home, which has already been approved for demolition administratively. Um, the initial elevations did not show the grade of the site. Uh, the applicant turned the, those revisions in, uh, the day after we had these written up. Um, so we, we've received those since then. Um, it does meet the rest of the relevant design guidelines with the usual conditions that staff verify the floor height, windows, doors, masonry and roofing. Staff finds that this application meets the design guidelines, uh, and the applicant has agreed with those conditions as well.
Okay, um, any questions to Paul?
Paul, what about the, um, outbuilding disapproval?
Um, the outbuilding, it also meets the design guidelines. It's, um, let me try to get it in approximate, uh, square footage, I think, let's see.
I guess my, let me rephrase that question. The applicant is okay that you've, the staff has disapproved it, are they working through more information?
Yes, they actually, that's, uh, I neglected to say that. They were fine with that. That was part of their revisions is to make a one and a half story outbuilding that, that does meet the design guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Paul, can we, can we go back to the first slide, please?
Sure.
No, the second slide, okay. Um, so you've just received, uh, topography information?
Um, that did not show up on their initial elevations. Um, and so you can see that the grade, excuse me, the grade is reflected, um, in, in this set. So these drawings are different from what's in the packet, that they do show the grade and the, what the, the foundation height.
And we can assume that this is accurate and that staff is comfortable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Is applicant here and like to speak regarding this project?
It's the same applicant as the previous, so I don't think.
Okay, state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Brad Searns with Four Square Design Studio. Um, we have completed the drawings, revision drawings to the outbuilding. Um, based on the requirements, it does meet the, the, uh, footprint requirements for the size of the lot. And, uh, it is now no longer a two-story structure, it is a story and a half structure with dormers that meet the two-foot inset requirement on the, uh, second floor walls. And I have copies of those if you'd like to see them.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
But you've met their, uh, recommendations that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Are we approving both now?
Um, no, sir, the outbuilding is one that can be approved administratively as it does meet the design guidelines. And since we didn't have that information at the time, um, I just moved to a recommended disapproval.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, open public hearing, anyone like to speak, uh, regarding this case? All right, seeing that, closed public hearing, discussion?
Motion.
Okay, a motion, a s- motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the, say it, Manchester, 925 Russell Street.
925 Russell Street is an application to construct duplex infill on a vacant lot. Staff, uh, several months ago, uh, issued a staff level permit for the demolition of the non-contributing, uh, structure that was formerly on the site. The structure is two stories with a total, uh, height of about 36 feet. There's, it gets a little bit taller because of the, the slope of the lot. The structure is 36 feet wide at the front. Here is the site plan. Um, the part of the project is also a three-bay, 748-square-foot garage at the rear of the property. Um, the garage does need a setback determination and that is because whenever, um, a garage's larger, an outbuilding is larger than 700 square feet, it has to meet larger setbacks of five feet and 20 feet from, five feet from the, the side and 20 feet from the alley. But the applicant is proposing three feet from the side and 10 feet from the alley. Um, again, the, the structure is 40, 36 feet wide at the front, but with the bays, um, towards the middle of the structure, it will be 40 feet wide. The primary duplex structure does meet all base zoning requirements. Here are the side and the rear facades. And here is the design of the outbuilding. Again, it's three bays, 748 square feet and one story. Uh, staff finds that the duplex, the outbuilding and the setback determination meet the design guidelines and is recommending approval with the constant standard conditions about staff's approval of materials and foundation height and, and HVAC units. Um, the commission did receive public comment on this project that was forwarded to you earlier in the week, uh, and I, um, the applicant is here if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Any questions? Melissa?
I'd just like to point out that, um, Melissa has stated in her report that the height of other built, neighboring buildings are 37 to 45 feet tall and this one's 36 and the width is 30 to 37 in other buildings and this one's 36.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to show the photos. So here are some photos of some, some tall structures. Um, the, the one on the top left is the structure immediately next door, but then you can see, um, just within a couple houses, a couple houses of this one, there are some fairly large structures. One is a multifamily, but some of them are single family.
Melissa, real quick, I recall, I read the public comment and I recall this being an easement issue?
I don't believe there is an easement issue, not that I'm aware of. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to.
I don't have the letter in front of me.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, interpret what he was saying, but, um, he, he had concerns about where the property lines were being drawn and the setbacks.
I recall.
So, um, the sep, the, the duplexes meeting the base zoning.
I didn't mean to say easement, I, I meant to say setbacks.
Okay, right, yeah.
Sorry.
So the, um, the, and the architect can speak to this.
I'll jump in a little if you don't mind. Um, he has since talked with the architect and I believe he's pretty good with everything and he may even be here today to clarify that, but I think that everything was resolved with a, with a better explanation from the applicant.
But is he in the confines of the, of the code as far as setbacks go?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Except for the garage, which is a typical, um, setback reduction that you.
From the alley?
Do, right.
From the alley and from the side.
Not, not from the side?
It is from, um, let me go back to the site plan.
But that was not a concern of the neighbor.
So the, the duplex does not need a setback determination, the outbuilding does. So the outbuilding on the, I guess the left-hand side, which would be the west side, uh, of the property is three feet from the alley, which is typical for outbuildings, but because the outbuilding is more than 700 square feet, they're asking, it's, it should be five feet, so they're asking for a two-foot reduction there.
Okay, but there, we don't have an issue of moving, from what we're seeing, up or down towards the neighbor? That's not what we're talking about?
The neighbors seem to be concerned with the duplex and the such, the, the placement of the duplex on the lot, not the placement of the outbuilding.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and say your name and address?
He's still on? Yeah. I'm Van Pond, uh, 2929 Sidco Drive, 37204. Um, I'm the architect for this project, um, as Melissa has said, and I have seen the letter, I got the letter yesterday, just like you all did probably, or maybe the day before. Um, I did speak with Andrew Jerome, who's at 923, which is to the north of this property, or I guess actually it's to the west, because it's toward downtown. Um, his concern was based on a couple of misinterpretations as part of asking for a setback reduction for you all for anything, whether it's an outbuilding or a new structure, we are required to notify in writing the adjacent neighbors, which is what we did. I believe Mr. Jerome took the notification of the reduction setback for the side of the outbuilding to be the entire structure, including the duplex. In talking to him yesterday, his concerns were that his house is actually closer than would be technically allowed today. He's about three feet off the property line, um, and we did confirm with our surveyor, the survey lines are accurate within less than an inch at this point. Um, his concern was that our house would be on the property line, it would be allowed to be there that close, it's not true, we had a good discussion about that. I don't think, and though I don't have exactly where his, the bays on his house are, I don't think our proj, our project would be any closer than eight feet to his structure in any point, and that would be at the bay of the main duplex. He does not have a structure at the rear of the property, which is actually what we're asking for the setback reduction, and those really were his biggest concerns. So I'm glad to answer any other questions you have.
Okay. Um, any other questions to the van? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project and just state your name and address?
Seemed to have worked out, um, those things I was mostly concerned with. Um, again, the main thing is that the proximity of the, of those areas, because my house actually jogs out. So I felt, because my home was built 140 years ago, you know, and without probably any regulations to the proximity to the, to the property lines, that new construction would never be placed that close, would make any sense. So that was my main thing. Um, and as long as we can say that the eight feet is good, you know, um, I don't want to see three feet or less than that. The garage, I don't have a big concern with, except for if I ever built a carriage house in the back, would that be a problem to where they, where we want to move theirs?
Uh, it wouldn't affect your right or ability to build a, a structure up to three feet from the property line.
Yeah, so, so I can build it within.
You could also do three feet.
If I wanted to go three feet over, I can do that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem with their garage. Um, I do have, um, you know, I'm not sure if this is the time and place, but we also talked with Mr. Pond about where air conditioners would be located because of, because we are kind of narrow in that area. And typically, air conditioners are in the middle of the houses. There, I know it's a duplex, so there's going to be one on each side. Um, you know, I feel that air conditioner's way out, we're out, you know, eight, 10 years, they're really noisy. Um, this bay area, I think was pretty much in the middle of the house, is right by a bedroom with two large windows that I have, they're about 90 inches tall. Um, and next to that is a dining room, so, you know, I don't want to hear a noisy air conditioner if that can be, uh, helped. So we talked about that maybe we can work something out within reason. And, um, so I guess I'm good with the setback as far as the garage, you know, I'm just a little concerned with the regulations between the houses, that's what I'm a little concerned with.
Okay, great.
And that's, that's about it.
Thank you very much and thanks for you speaking with the architect beforehand, that's, that's really good.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, I'll, closed public hearing, discussion?
Well, um, yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased that, um, he and the architect were on the same page, but, uh, Robin, you know, it's, uh, it's an easy thing to say, hey, that's okay with me if it's okay with you, and then something turns out differently and it's not okay with one party or the next. Can this continue to go through staff somehow to make sure that these parties are satisfied somehow?
Well, what it's basically was clarification. I think it was not necessarily a deal made or anything, I think it was just clarification that, uh, him describing what exactly was happening.
Okay, so then that setback's going to be eight feet?
From, from the, between houses, that's not the property setback.
Yeah, just between houses.
And one of the conditions is that the HVAC, which people often don't know at the time that they come to you, the exact location of that, will need to be reviewed by staff and the design guidelines say it should be from the midpoint back. So that's really all we can do. The architect may, uh, agree to work more with the neighbor on that, but really, I think all you have the real authority to say is from the midpoint back.
Good, fair enough.
I think it's a matter of discussion, you know, where, we're careful about how buildings are to the boundaries and normally we do five foot. are to the boundaries, and normally, we do five foot. So again, just reiterating that everybody has acknowledged that it's three foot and that's what setback determination, so it seems like it's, you know, agreeable. You're shaking your head.
That's just the garage, not the house.
Yes, absolutely.
And his concern was the distance between the homes.
Right.
Sorry.
Well, clarified, duly noted. But again, just because it's our review about being careful, you know, how that does, so that when somebody does build again, then they do go to the five foot or three foot. So that seems logical and specific to this location.
Do we know? I have a motion, or you about to say something else? Okay, motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, second.
With staff recommendation.
Oh, it's my turn? Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1329 Seventh Avenue North.
1329 Seventh Avenue North is an application to demolish a non-contributing building and to construct a multi-unit residential development. The project requires rezoning to a specific plan, SP zoning. This application is for approval of the overall massing only. If the rezoning is approved by the planning commission, the applicant will return to our commission, the historic zoning commission, for final approval of the design and details. The property is located at the corner of Seventh Avenue North and Taylor Street, across from the Worthing complex. It will have a primary corner entrance and will have secondary stoop entrances to individual units along Taylor Street. Parking for the site is largely contained on the interior of the lot, with two spaces provided at the rear of Taylor Street side just off the alley. The site plan here shows a potential parking area within the ground floor of Unit 5. If implemented, this parking would mean that the windows along Taylor Street would open into a garage rather than a living space. Staff does not recommend that parking be on the ground floor without being screened with fully usable conditioned space. Sections 5.33 and 4 of the design guidelines require that parking structures be located behind or below buildings, and that parking structures close to the sidewalk include retail uses at the ground floor level to engage the pedestrian network. Although this is not a large parking structure, the result of the disengagement from the street but in the pedestrian network is the same. So we've been working with the architects on this week, but haven't had a chance to fully, you know, look at revisions, but we are working with him to kind of work on parking on the, on the side and placement. I think he may have more to say on that. Here are the elevation drawings along Seventh Avenue North. The development will be two stories with a setback third story. Staff finds this appropriate since Seventh Avenue North is more residential in scale and character. Along Taylor Street and across from the Worthing development, the building will be three stories. Staff finds the overall height, massing and scale to meet the design guidelines. If SP zoning is approved for the project, the applicant will return to the historic zoning commission with a second application for review of materials, windows and doors, porches, balconies and awnings, appurtenances and utility locations and the overall detailing of the proposal. And here are some context photos. The photo on the top is the, are the residential structures just to the left along Seventh Avenue North. And then on the lower left is the Worthing complex. And then the final photo on the lower right is looking, I'm not sure what direction that would be, but looking east down Taylor Street. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that there be no parking within Unit 5, and the applicant return to the zoning, historic zoning commission if it's, if the project's approved by the planning commission for final approval of details, materials and overall design of the project. And the applicant is here to answer further questions.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thanks Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward, state the name and address?
Manuel Zeitlin, architect, 516 Hagen Street. This is a project that was, had a former SP on it, and it was by previous owner, and they were doing four cottages and core development, since bought the property and felt like cottage developments in this location would be way out of scale and really not a good addition to the street, so came, hired us to actually work on something that would be, it's right across the street from Wolf and Daughter, so it would relate to that scale of the boiler room and that part of Worthing and be an addition to the street. We've met with, we first met with Michael Emmerich and to get his feedback, and then we met with the Germantown Neighborhood Board on their May 2nd, I think, meeting or May 4th meeting. But anyway, they, they loved the project, were real excited about it. My client also met with Councilwoman Gilmore, and her only really concern was having adequate parking, getting parking off the street. So we've actually provided more parking than zoning requires, we're providing basically a car for each bedroom on what's a very narrow site. So looking at the drawing that's on there, the other thing Melissa didn't mention, I think on the bottom right, we were showing an onsite parking space on the side of the building that facing Seventh, and there's a tree there, and we're showing a privacy fence screening the parking space from the, from the street. So that was one of the things I wanted to ask, if that would be acceptable, just because we're trying to get all the cars off, off the street. We've been going back and forth with Melissa and actually came up with a design to, you can see along, along Taylor, there's a series of little, like almost four-year home office spaces. There's a stoop, become double four-year space, and then to the side is a bay, projecting bay that's a home office. So in the, the building on the right, the building on the corner was actually designed to refer back to buildings like the Mad Platter Building, that's why it's brick compared to the other newer townhouse feeling buildings. So we, we've shown actually bringing that building on Taylor out flush with those projecting bays of those townhouses and getting enough space to have a real active, a real viable space to screen the, the car, so you're not looking at a garage, and have enough space where it really is usable. I've got a, I've got a drawing of that, I don't know if you want that or if you just want to leave it to staff to review that, review the drawing and.
I think, yeah, we can just leave it to staff probably, I think, because you're, seems like you're, you're amenable to the conditions and you've already worked, working on a solution, so I think, I think we're good. I mean, you know, I think that's enough information.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks Manuel. Open public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, any questions, staff? I didn't give you all the chance to say anything, that's it? No questions? Okay.
Our time has passed.
All right, thanks Manuel. Open public hearing? Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
Seems that surrounding community, and if, when you look at the project and the scale, you know, it's making a transition between some one and two-story on, directly adjacent on Seventh and what's a, you know, pretty massive complex around the corner. Well done, and I think it meets the guidelines in terms of the application for scale and massing, which I think, to clarify, that's kind of why we're here, and some of the finer details will be presented and approved later. So I move approval with staff recommendation.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we have some preliminary SP reviews next, 1200 Seventh Avenue North.
Okay, this next application, as you said, is to review the massing for a proposed SP for a mixed-use project on multiple parcels at the end of the block that is between Sixth and Seventh Avenues North and about just north of Madison Street. The project includes two and three-story buildings, which will be 25 feet and 46 feet tall respectively. The project, as I said, requires rezoning to SP-specific purpose. So the current proposal is for approval of the massing only. If the, if passed here, the application goes to the planning commission. If the planning commission approves the SP, the project will return here to this commission for a final review of things like windows, proportions, materials, et cetera. The adjacent parcels to this, just to the north on Sixth and Seventh Avenue, avenues are both one-story historic houses. And across Madison to the south of this property, these parcels, is the Elliott School Building, which is three stories tall, and that is 46 feet tall to the top of that parapet. In the context between these types of buildings, staff finds a proposed massing, shown sketch here, to be compatible with those adjacent structures, and that the massing meets the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the massing with conditions that if the SP is approved by the planning commission, the applicant returns with a second application for review of materials, windows and doors, proportion and rhythm of openings, porches, stoops, fences and walls, sidewalks, appurtenances, utility locations and the overall detailing of the proposal. With that as a condition, staff finds the massing to meet the design guidelines for Germantown and recommends approval.
Okay, thanks Sean. Any questions for Sean?
Just as a matter of mechanics of this, so when it goes to this planning commission and then it comes back to commission, does that mean that it's, can be staff-approved or does it come before the board? Okay, thank you.
Sean, the massing next to the existing single-story or one-and-a-half-story home on Sixth, you are, I guess, comfortable with that?
Yes, the, that's the top row of these images, is Sixth Avenue. The one-story house is shown as just a blue box there, but it's the red house on, on the right, so it's actually obviously gabled, but still in profile, it would have the silhouette of a box like that. And, and we measured or estimated that to be 23 feet tall. The most adjacent portion of this will be 25 feet tall. It was, within reason, staff found that to be compatible. And then I think one parcel north of that house is another one-story house, that's the Cupcake Collection. I think that's where that is.
I mean, it's curious, is the Germant, this is in Germantown?
Yes.
Is the Germantown community a proponent of these kind of developments, basically adjacent to single-story homes or is?
I can't speak for the neighborhood, I guess, the applicant can, has met with him and can probably speak to that, and I think Robin has met with the neighbors as well.
I can speak to when the guidelines were written. There's certainly, I certainly don't, don't speak for the neighborhood as a whole, but I can speak for some of the thought that went into it, and this site in particular and others, that these are large lot, they may still be divided into individual parcels, but it was large lot, you know, real estate transactions that would generate something, likely generate something other than a single-family home infill. And so to that end, the guidelines were specifically written to, to address the, you know, that likelihood. And I think noted on this one, specifically on the Sixth Avenue elevation, is it appears, based on the rhythm that you would see with a few missing teeth on, on Sixth Avenue, that there's a little bit wider gap between the existing one-story home that has a wider side yard, and then you add that to the setback that Manuel's put on this one, you, you kind of get that, you know, major collector street, Elliott School Building, this is, you know, multifamily transitioning into the existing sort of one, one and two-story, you know, certainly not homogenous, is a wide mix of, of houses in the neighborhood, so that's my two cents worth on that.
Okay, thanks Sean. Applicant like to come forward or, yep, just in case there's questions about the neighborhood, name and address?
Manuel Zeitlin, architect, 516 Hagen Street. You know, we designed the Mad Platter renovation 30 years ago, so finally gotten hired to do a couple of projects in Germantown after, after all these years. It's nice to be back there. So we've, same thing, same process we did on the other SP, we met with Don Emmerich of the Germantown Historic Mafia. Now, Michael was great, he gave us a lot of feedback and guidance on both these projects and was excited about both of them. And then we presented this project also to the neighborhood group, and again, pretty much unanimously excited. We're doing all the parking for this project underground that will enter off the alley, so parking 100% of the bedrooms, again, not, you know, well in excess of zoning requirements. We're widening the alley, we're, we, basically primarily with both buildings relating to the massing of the Elliott School and responding to that from a design standpoint, and then sort of moderating that step down to the neighborhood by both the two-story, going from three stories to two stories, both sections are the width of the houses next to them, and they, and they step down. And looking through Germantown, there are a lot of examples, historic, you know, 100-plus year old examples of a one-story house next to a two-and-a-half, three-story house, next to a one-story house, to a one-story house, to a three-story house. So there's, there's not a real consistency in Germantown of, of the heights, even though that one's next to this, our one-story, it's really fitting that there's some, some height differences. So I'm here if you have any other questions, really.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I'd like you. My only hesitate, it's not hesitation, I'm just, you know, just wanted to be sure that, that the one-story neighbor just didn't feel like Elliott School had just leaped over and, you know, it's like, oh my God, I'm next to a school now. Thank you for those comments.
Yeah, I think, you know, we haven't gotten to the design part of it, but I'm just studying the massing, I think, you know, I'm starting to picture that those two transition buildings look less like Elliott School and maybe even end up with some sloped roof pieces and, you know, and again, we'll be working with staff on some of those, those issues with height, but I think making a little more, even a little more visual connection might be nice.
Just a comment to Commissioner Fletcher, I know the neighborhood well, and I think what helps the massing and scaling of that is because the roads there seem to be a little wider. And so when you have, you don't have that total, if you might say, canyon effect, you know, where you, you do have spatial visual on that, so that, that helps the neighborhood not feel so closed in.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Open public hearing? Anyone like to speak regarding this project? State your name and address.
I'm James Lennon with the Mainland Companies, we're at 118 16th Avenue North. We're the developer for this project, and I just wanted to give a couple more points. We met with the neighbor next door on Seventh Avenue, Khaki Hatcher, and spent a few hours with her, and the issue of height was never, was not one of her concerns. Well, let me rephrase that. She didn't raise the issue of height as one of her concerns. We talked about, you know, sidewalk width and construction coordination issues, and so I just wanted you to be aware of that. And then the only other context that I would, you know, sort of point out is going up Sixth Avenue, Madison Street takes a jog. And to the, the east side of Sixth, so directly facing our property are our three-story buildings right there. So that context of the two-story, yes, it's a one, you know, the one-story dormer next to it, but across the street from it is a three-story building, so I just wanted to point that out. Anyway, but I'm available if there's any questions.
Okay, thanks, appreciate you coming. Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
Move approval with staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1716 Greenwood Avenue.
This is another SP, and the site includes three historic buildings, two chapels, which are connected by a nonhistoric portion and a bungalow. The proposal is to reconstruct the connecting addition, rehab the existing historic buildings, construct infill around the historic buildings and demolish two outbuildings. The project requires a rezoning to a specific plan. The proposal is for this overall approval of the massing again, and they would come back if approved by the planning commission for final approval. The two outbuildings to be demolished are nonhistoric. The overall massing scale, roof form and orientation of the new construction is compatible with the site, which has some real diverse scale between the two chapels and the single-family dwelling. The setbacks will be determined by the SP rezoning, and staff finds the proposed setbacks to meet the historic context on the site. There's no alley access to the property. Vehicular access includes a 16-foot wide curb cut on Chapel and a 24-foot wide curb cut on Greenwood. Parallel parking will replace the pull-in parking on Chapel, and the same will be added to the Greenwood Avenue side. On-street parking is typical throughout the neighborhood. The majority of the parking will be internal to the project as meets the guidelines. So staff recommends approval with the conditions that there be no wall dormers facing the street. And if the SP is approved by the planning commission, the applicant will return to the commission with a second application for review of materials, windows and doors, proportion and rhythm of openings, porches, balcony.
proportion and rhythm of openings, porches, balconies and awnings, appurtenances and utility locations, exterior alterations of existing buildings, and the overall detailing of the project. And with those conditions, staff found that the project met the guidelines. You also received a letter of support from Councilmember Westerholm that was emailed to you this morning, I believe. Do you have any questions for me? The applicant is here.
Just curious, do you know the intended use of the chapel?
I don't, but the applicant may be able to explain that a little bit further. They, they have worked with the neighborhood quite a bit, not only to determine the appropriate massing and layout of the project, but the appropriate use that the neighborhood would support.
Okay, thanks Robin. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Good afternoon, my name is Clay Haynes, I live at 1015 Fatherland Street, and I represent Oak Tree Partners. Stand before you here today, we purchased this property with the intent to ensure that it remained a historic asset to the community. Whenever we originally purchased the property, there was not an overlay on it, I would like to point that out. I spent a lot of time onsite working with both the community, as well as trying to do some really thoughtful reflection, you know? I, I feel that weight of history when you have structures that are 150 years old, some of the oldest in East Nashville, and we want our, our proposal to be durable and forward-looking on an equal timescale. One of the things in, in the ongoing discussions with the community, and then kind of spending a lot of time there onsite, that I could never really get comfortable with, was the, the concept of erecting a two-by-six wall in these historic spaces, and then, you know, kind of tossing someone the keys and saying it was their condo. So, that begs the question, and, and, you know, we posed the question again to the community, would you prefer to see this as residential or a neighborhood-scale mixed use? And the, the overall consensus was that they would prefer neighborhood-scale mixed use. So then, we kind of circled back and, and tried to very thoughtfully come up with a proposal that both met the community needs, as well as ensured that these spaces that have been a place of congregation for 150 years remained a place of congregation. So, we would appreciate your support of this project, and, and would be happy to answer any questions. I also would mention that our architect, Nick Dryden, with Dade is here, so if you have any specific questions with respect to the design characteristics, he can help answer those.
Any questions to the applicant? Richard was asking for, just not, not that has anything to do with the project.
Yeah, absolutely, so, the proposal that, that we have, we try to be very thoughtful about balancing it out, and not having, and kind of spreading a spectrum of uses. So the proposal that we have is for the connector building and the two historic structures, the primary sanctuary is office space, so a co-working and office suites concept is what we've proposed for that structure. On the ground floor of the 1851 Chapel, that's approximately 3,000 square feet, we have proposed a restaurant use with office space above, and then micro retail in the connector between, and then lots above.
Okay, thank you. And, and that has nothing to do, but since he, you know, we, we don't care about the use, but we appreciate you telling us about it. Okay, any questions about any more, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Brett Withers, I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. I'm the immediate past president of the Eastwood Neighbors Group, I had served in that capacity for five years, and have successfully turned that over to a very capable replacement, Cliff Lippard is the current president, who has sent you a letter today of support. Cliff was our vice president last year as our neighborhood worked with Mr. Haynes to find a plan that our community would support for this project. Just really quickly, this building has obviously been in our neighborhood for a long time, it was part of our original overlay, but the congregation that used to meet there fell on hard times, as many do, and was not able to maintain the building, and so, you know, frankly, a lot of our neighbors worried that the building would fall into a state of disrepair that actually would require its demolition. We have, this is the third application that we have seen, at least during my tenure as the president, the first one was to convert the building to a school use that would have required fairly significant additions to the building. Our neighborhood was split on that one. That deal fell through, a second proposal was brought forward as well to construct a 46-unit residential project that would have divided the building into condos, as well as added a lot of other uses, there were concerns about that, and that deal fell through. We were overjoyed to find that someone finally just paid cash for the building and was willing to work with us, and so, Mr. Haynes has done an outstanding job of working with our community to find a way to preserve the exterior, but also the interior of the structures which we're interested in, and to add a very, very minimal amount of additional housing on the outside. The mixed-use nature of the project is something obviously that we will take up with the Planning Commission, but that has been very popular with our neighbors in finding a way of, of transitioning uses in the interior of our neighborhood. But we feel that this is the most sensitive plan, certainly that we've seen in the last several years for preserving the exterior of the building, even preserving the interior that we could actually go into and see it in a restaurant, and, as well as having a minimal impact on adding a tremendous amount of residential density in the neighborhood. So, the official letter from Cliff Lippard is in support, and I echo that support as the immediate past president of Eastwood Neighbors. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I move approval based on staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there any other business?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that the budget hearing is today at 6:15. If you can join us, that would be greatly appreciated. I believe Mr. Walker was hoping people could be there a little bit early, maybe around 6:00, and they believe that they'll get started at 6:15.
All right, being the end of business, call is being adjourned.